I want to do this.
Planning and zoning commission meeting of June 20th, 2024. Please come to order. Happy summer, everyone. And Erin, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to make sure everybody in the audience. Bob, you can hear okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. We have two public hearings scheduled for this evening, so I want to take a few minutes to review the process for public hearings and the current hybrid format of our meetings. During the public hearing, I insist that we treat each other respectfully, do not interrupt, and follow the required structure of the meeting, and everyone will be given a fair opportunity to hear, review, submit, and comment on the testimony and evidence the commission will use to render its decision. All speakers should be recognized by the chair before being allowed to speak. As a reminder, we on the commission are here to listen and ask questions of the applicant. We should refrain from conversations with attendees. And I asked that all cell phones be silenced during the meeting. The steps for conducting a public hearing are as follows. Step one, the applicant will be invited to present the application, explaining to the commission and others present what is being requested. The applicant or staff will share all application materials on the screen as needed. Comments or town agencies will be read for each application if there aren't any. Step two, commissioners will ask clarifying questions before speaking. Each commissioner will be recognized by the chair. Step three, attendees will have an opportunity for clarifying questions and comments. Anyone who wishes to speak must raise their hand and be recognized by the chair before they speak. For Zoom attendees, please raise your hands through the Zoom platform and wait to be called on and unmuted. According to Connecticut Land Use Law, cross-examination of persons testifying is allowed, but cross-examination of commissioners is not. At this, as this public hearing must be recorded, attendees will state their names and addresses before asking their questions or make statements. The applicant will have an opportunity to address any questions or concerns raised by the public or commissioners and must be given the opportunity to speak again without interruption. Once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the regular meeting, during which the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as to the decision of this commission and has a right to appeal to Superior Court if desired. Decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the land use department at 203-245-5631 after 9:00 AM. All actions taken tonight by the commission will be by roll call. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves for the record before speaking. Seated this evening, our members, Mike Bogdan, Jeff Downs, John Dusa, and myself, Chair Carol Snow, and on Zoom, we have Bob O'Connor joining us. Staff present this evening is Erin Mannix, Town Planner. This meeting is live streamed on YouTube and will be made available on the town website for viewing. And the Town Planner will now read the legal notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June 20th, 2024, beginning at 6:00 PM. The following applications. Application number 24-17, petition for regulation text amendment, applicant Kelly in Kingsley Goddard. Petition to amend section 3.11D4 of the Madison zoning regulations, special use regulations for farms in a residential district. Applicants may appear and be heard and submit written testimony to the Planning and Zoning Commission. In doing so, you can submit those via email at landuse@madisonct.org. Notice of this hearing was given in the source on June, Thursday, June 6th, 2024, and Thursday, June 13th, 2024.
Thank you, Erin. We appreciate everyone coming to this new venue, and we hope it works without any major glitches. So with that, I think we'll get started on the public hearings. First on the agenda is 24-10, Six Opening Hill Road, which is not going to be heard this evening because the applicant requested a continuance. We hope to hear perhaps even at a special meeting in July, which will be posted appropriately. So next on our agenda is the continuation of public hearing from June 6th, 2024, 24-15, 251 Boston Post Road. MAP 35 lot 53, Zone PDD. Owner My Four Boys LLC, applicant Homacy Stevens and Associates. It's a petition for zone boundary change plan development district per section 32, modification of master plan to convert a club into a restaurant with residential unit above with associated site improvements. The applicant like to come to the podium.
Jeffrey Beauty for the applicant 20 Water Street. We're here this evening following the June 6th meeting in front of the commission, and I'd like to update you on this, the progress that's happened in the interim. So following our meetings, we reached out to the Department of Transportation to explore the possibility.
You speak louder than what it is.
Sure. Following the January, the June 6th meeting, we reached out to the department this, no, thank you, okay. To the Department of Transportation to explore the possibility of getting egress onto the Boston Post Road from the existing driveway that served the Winter Club for many years. As you may recall, the DOT had indicated that they would not allow egress, just ingress from the Boston Post Road to the Winter Club site as following this commission's adoption of their PDD. We reached out with them. We came up with a proposal that they had indicated would be acceptable to them, which was that traffic could come into the property and passenger vehicles could exit the property onto the post road. But commercial trucks would need to enter, to exit the property on the Stonewall Lane. My client my client advises that there are perhaps 10 deliveries with commercial vehicles throughout the course of a week. Most of, all of them would occur between 8:00 AM and 12:00 PM. And the hope was that with that limited number of vehicles coming out onto Stonewall Lane, that would address some of the concerns that were raised at the prior meeting with regard to the impact on the neighborhood in Stonewall Lane. And that most, all the diners would be encouraged to travel out onto the Boston Post Road when leaving the restaurant. That was our hope. And the initial response from the Department of Transportation was that that would be a creative way to solve the problem because they indicated that that would be acceptable until about 2:30 this afternoon. When they called us back and said, that was no longer an option. So what they, what they did say, so they said, we want all traffic to exit the property from Stonewall. The driveway on Stonewall. They did indicate that if we could demonstrate, if we could provide them with DEP approval to conduct activity within the Net River area to improve the sideline, meaning remove brush and, and trees to improve the sideline looking to the east, that they would revisit this, but they wouldn't say that that would be an acceptable. They still didn't do it, that it would be an acceptable alternative to what, that, to what they would allow. We, we sent to them later this afternoon, the DEP's report that was submitted to this commission at the time that, that we were applying for the PDD approval, which indicated that they were agreeable, that the DEP was agreeable to removal of, of brush and trees within the Net River to improve the sideline. In the Wetlands approval we got at the time we were applying for the PDD, also would allow us to remove those things to, to improve the sideline on the post road. We sent that to them later this afternoon. We haven't received a response from them yet. But even if we did receive a response from them, we don't know that they've received it. We don't know what their position would be using the driveway, the existing driveway as an exit solely for passenger vehicles. So we're here tonight going back to the proposal that we made at the last meeting where we would have a harsh or hard left turn exit from this driveway that enters off the Stonewall Lane. We are agreeing to put up what barriers we can to minimize the impact on the residents directly across the street from the driveway by a screening or vegetation, vegetative barrier, something that would look nice. To the extent that we can do that and not obstruct the view to the north on Stonewall Lane from cars that are leaving. So we're trying to strike a balance that serves the functionality that we're now limited to by the response that we got from the DOT this afternoon, but minimizes, to the extent we can minimize it, to the, uh, the neighborhood on, off of Stonewall Lane. This is not our first choice. We would prefer to continue to use the driveway that has been used by members of the Winter Club for many, many years. And we're, we're going to continue to pursue that option with the DOT and the DEP, given the information that we've already received from the DEP and the Wetlands Commission. We don't have that information tonight. So what we're requesting is that this commission grant, when we don't know it, when we're going to get it, because the DOT may not act on it at all, or may say, no, we still don't like that, that alternative. So what we're requesting this evening is that this commission approve the, the proposal that we've made for the left turn onto Stonewall Lane with screening and vegetative buffers to minimize the impact on the Stonewall neighborhood and its residents across the street. I, just so commission and the public are aware, I reached out to an engineer who's working with the neighbors across the street Tuesday to let him, he had reached out to me and I told him what progress I believe we had made. When we got the feedback from the DOT this afternoon, I immediately called him to let him know that the DOT had gone, had changed course in terms of what had been proposed. So we have done our best to try and make the neighborhood aware of the progress that we've been making, particularly the ones that the house is going to be most directly impacted by what we're proposing, and we remain committed to doing what we can to minimize that impact. But right now, that's the only alternative that's been made available to us with regard to traffic coming out of. All the traffic in the world can come into the property. It's getting them out of the property. That's the problem. And it's not for a lack of effort on our part or casual approach to this to say, oh, we'll just send them out on Stonewall Lane. We're, we've, we've made phone calls. Mr. Mandel can speak to the conversations that he's had. He's received calls from what, four or five different people or, and DOT saying what's going on, what can we do at various levels of the chain of command? We have tried to work with them to get this, but, and we thought we had come up with a resolution that was going to work from our perspective and from the neighbor's perspective as recently as 2:00 this afternoon. But that's why we're, that's where we are right now. So we're asking for this, that the commission approved the amendment with our representation that we're going to continue to, to the extent that we can, to pursue the access onto the Boston Post Road. The problem is we can't really move the driveway to move it to the east. It's closer to the Net River, which is not an optimal solution. If we move it to the west, it's closer to the intersection with Stonewall Lane, which is not an optimal solution. So we're kind of limited in terms of what we can do with the existing driveway. So we're trying to, we've tried to be as creative as we can to come up with a solution that works from our perspective, works from the neighbor's perspective, and works from the DOT's perspective. And we thought we had threaded that needle until a few hours ago. So that's where we are. The, the other component of our request is the the, the DOT has asked for the town's blessing for the removal of the trees to the west of the driveway. As you're looking towards Stonewall, there are some oak trees that are there. They want the town to say it's okay for within the trees within the states right of way to remove those trees to remove, improve the sideline.
To the west of the driveway or to the east?
East. To the east, I'm sorry. There's truly, right, true. We would be happy to remove them, but because they're in the state right of way, the state says, we need the town to say it's okay. The first selectman has said, well, let's see what the planning and zoning commission says. If you say you're okay with the removal of the trees, my understanding is that she will then say, we're fine with that. The DOT will say, go ahead, take down those trees. So you're the, the cog that turns the key, the key that turns those steps to improve the sight line as you look to the east on the post road.
But even if we did approve that, there's no guarantee that the DOT will approve it anyway.
Correct, correct. But, but we're, as I said, we're trying to do everything we can on our end to make it as safe as possible to increase the likelihood that the DOT will give us the permission to have traffic exit out of the site.
Another question I have. What, did you say that you have done something to mitigate the neighbors on the outside of the property as well?
We had put, we were going to put screening in as you approached the driveway out. There is vegetation there now that will come in and from our perspective, it's, we're not, what we're proposing doesn't really change the circulation issues that one of the neighborhoods employees. Right, with, with regard to what was going to exist, even if we could exit out on the post road, there's going to be cars coming in and circulating throughout the, the parking area to get them out. But, you know, we're, we're doing, we're, we'll do what we can to minimize the impact. We want to be trying to be good neighbors.
Can we see the site plan again?
That's sure.
Get Chair, I'm not out here. Which my, my question.
Let's see, it's 61824.
It's not 619?
Oh, let's see what 619. Could be. So Chuck Mandell, agent for the applicant, also a very convoluted story here. And I'm not going to plow the same field Jeff did. I can update you on other things that we talked about at the last meeting. Uh, one was someone wanted a letter from DOT saying that they will not grant it without permission without, without the easement. So DOT did not come out and say they won't allow us. They said we had to acquire the correct sight lines. I did submit that as an exhibit earlier on. I did reach out to the adjoining property to the east. And I did have another exhibit here. I went, they refused to grant any cutting on their property sign. And here's the original. I'll submit that. The other item was then I spoke to Tracy May about getting this taken care of. What are we going to do? She referred me to an other transportation expert. I'm going to butcher his name, Rajee Mahat, I believe his name is, so I could get the correct spelling later on. I had a quite lengthy discussion with him on Monday, and that's when we discussed taking the single unit 30-foot vehicles exiting from Stonewall Lane. He thought that was a great solution. He said we had the sight line issues to deal with still, but he asked about the 85th percentile on traffic. So we had SLR with traffic study for us. So this posted speed limit is 40 miles per hour. The actual speed that people go varies between 42 and 43 miles per hour. And that's all in the traffic study that we had done. We have living, our original sight line was for SU 30 vehicles exiting from the site. So these are big lumberous machines and they try to get out, they can't get out of their own way, get onto the post road. So the sight line is significantly different for passenger vehicles. So it was 438, I forget what exactly the number was, but we were able to get that sight line completely within the state right of way. We also had Wetlands permission for the original sight line, which was a lot more cutting. I do have the CAM application, which is already on file, but I have another copy from it that I can read you a brief. We didn't try to bamboozle anyone. We weren't hiding anything. Everything was upfront and they actually addressed this. They said other specific activities include septic widening, the entrance, tree removal for improved site within the state's right of way. So that was called out from the DEP. So DOT was not aware that we had CAM approval, but at the time I didn't realize we had come up with it. So I sent that to him today at about 3:30 this afternoon. I sent that to DOT. You have it already, folks. And so here we are, um, after the last meeting. So like I said, we addressed, I did have the email from DOT and Tracy saying if we could get the sight lines, we're not saying you can't use it, but you need the easements. Well, now we don't need an easement if we use passenger vehicles based on Rajah's comments. After the meeting also, the owner who's here with me tonight met with several of the adjoining property owners and discussed putting trees down, so evergreens. We don't have a landscape plan. We didn't do anything specific, but he agreed to plant where they wanted. We would look at the screening and see where they need to be planted. I don't know the conversation that Jeff had with the other adjoining property owner, but we were also willing to put screening, evergreen screen, our variety, whatever is appropriate. We can consult with someone else. But we're kind of in a trap. So I feel that based on the TEP letter and Rajah's original comments about using SUV vehicles exiting Stonewall Lane, I believe that we will get approvals for the passenger vehicles, but if not, we need, we need to get off the site somehow. And there was one other comment that one of the commissioners made was had we talked to the town engineer about this? I didn't see any need for a, a second traffic study, which isn't going to show us anything. We know Stonewall Lane is not the greatest place to leave from. We all know that. The town engineer, his first comment was, it's not his jurisdiction. And I don't have any written testimony, but that's what he said. He told me in the field. And then the second one was he wasn't going to write a letter saying this is safe. And that was it. And I, Erin, did he, did you talk to them at all?
Yes, I'll let you.
Oh, okay. And that was, and that was the last conversation I had. So I, I didn't see anything in writing. I didn't get anything back from uh, but it was a very short window that we were working in. So, and then here we are tonight. We really have pretty much been trapped. Where we are. That's it.
Thanks.
Just one question. Was there any comment about making that left turn the way it is from the town?
No, uh, he didn't. I don't think Inako had a problem with that at all. A left turn, although he actually thought that was a good idea.
I mean, it was used by the club for years.
Correct. And, and it's going to be a 27-degree angle, whatever it is. So if you really, if you want to ruin your time, you could probably hop the curb. We can make it more dramatic. We put landscaping there. We want to landscape in the right. We just make it very uncomfortable for someone to make. And there would be proper signage on. So that was another comment that Raji, DOT had made, make sure there's plenty of signage for trucks not leaving. That's it.
Erin, did you want to add?
Sure, I can.
Some information?
I'm just off screen, but I'll identify myself for the record. Erin Mannix, Town Planner. I, to recap, yes, from our last meeting, I know Carol, you weren't here, but I, I do in conversation with you, understand that you've reviewed where we are. Questions were raised, one, to provide evidence of DOT comments regarding the driveway, which, as you indicated, you did along with the neighbor's letter rejecting an easement. The screening to the north that you brought up, Mike Bogdan, and the, there was question about whether or not there was a need to bring this revised proposal back to the traffic consultant to provide any feedback to the commission in making this decision to now divert all egress from the common driveway off to Stonewall Lane. And because we received that plan late in the day on our last meeting, we had not been able to have feedback from the engineering department. I did talk to Johnny Inako today, who is our town engineer. He indicated that he did meet you out on field. Chuck with Fraser and kind of went through what the history and, and was brought up to speed on that. I, I updated him now of the newest move that we received today. You know, indicating that the state is not going to allow passenger vehicles to egress. And so if you're looking to have all traffic exit on Stonewall Lane, the question that the town is raising is what, what is the safer option with regards to sight lines on the post, on the Boston Post Road? Is it more appropriate to divert all traffic to Stonewall Lane, which is further west and may or may not have for, or, you know, worse sight lines than the existing driveway in the center of Boston Post Road? And our thought was that it would be a useful exercise to have your traffic consultant look at that and between those two options with respect to sight lines and which is, which provides the better sight line. And then being able to have both the town and the applicant and the state engage in conversations of really what is the best option here for the safest egress from the site with that driveway. Because in, in his thought, just, and I think he said this out in the field, was that it was hard to see that Stonewall was a better sight line than that center driveway. But the town has not engaged in the discussions with the state for their reasonings. And we don't have that even analysis from your traffic engineer that you provided with your initial master plan. So that was John's recommendation so that we can still explore what, what options there are for the center driveway and to hear directly what, what is the potential for impact at that intersection that currently, you know, is a, is a two-dead end street that serves about 15 homes versus that and the commercial. And, and so the thought is that this, you're back here because this is a significant enough change to the master plan. You know, initially the, the point was to to direct all commercial traffic associated with the use to the commercial corridor. And so now that that's a change, I, I think it is relevant to have that feedback from your traffic. And John seemed to agree with that. So that's not, you know, not ruling it, but needing some more information and perhaps being able to have further discussions with the state and see what else could be worked, you know, in looking at that existing driveway.
I get all that. I really do. I understand. My client spent thousands and thousands of dollars on another traffic study like we discussed last time. If DOT is going to dig their heels in and say Stonewall Lane was a town road, that's really, that's in use. They have no jurisdiction over it. Another traffic study, sure, they could come up with, and if they do say that the middle entrance, we'll call it the middle entrance, is the safer alternative, which I believe it is actually. I think Stonewall Lane is the, is not a great decision. And, and, but that's why I believe that we should be able to get this other entrance, and we can certainly pursue that. But I think to get moving with our, move on with our lives. And some of the neighbors have agreed already to put additional screening on there. We're going to pursue using the middle entrance with DOT. We have CAM approval now. We have DEP approval. The neighbors are not granting us other approval. We do have an SLR traffic study stating the 85th percentile. We know what the safe traffic sight line is. And let's say SLR comes out with Stonewall Lane. Let's say it's not as safe. And they're not going to make offsite improvements. It's not going to start straightening out Route 1 in that particular area. So I'm just, I get what you're saying and to cover, you know, your bases, but I don't think a second traffic study is going to do anything except just delay these proceedings. And we're just going to, he's going to spend a thousand dollars to say Stonewall Lane was not a good alternative. And yes, maybe DOT, maybe I can get a supplemental report from SLR without, to go to DOT with. I can maybe have a conversation with that. But based on that, I think this commission has worked. My client is actually trapped now. If DOT denies it, they're going to deny it. Then it ends up in the courts. I don't really understand. So I, I don't see the purpose of a second traffic study, but obviously it's up to the commission. If you want to get into us, another traffic study, delay it another month. That's fine. We're, you know, we're here, we're here. We, you know, at your beck and call, whatever, whatever hoop you need us to jump. We just, we just want to get this thing moving.
We wish we could approve it.
Oh, I know.
Or we wish we could have approved it months ago. But I do worry about the safety and I have gone by and looked at the, at the Stonewall Lane intersection there. And there's a, you know, there's a, a stone wall and elevated.
It's all in the state right of way.
I know, and that's why, I, I don't want, we don't want the state to be.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If they say, if they want to remove the stone wall, then then what do we do?
No, we don't.
Exactly.
But, but I think there are some safety issues and I do think that, that the existing driveway for the club is the safest.
I, we're, I agree. We're not disagreeing. I agree 100%.
No, I'm not wild about taking down all the vegetation around the Net River, except the invasive species maybe, but when they suggested taking down more trees, you know, I have a little, I have trouble with that too. Is, any other commissioners' questions?
Is the you're suggesting that the DOT approval may be contingent upon moving two trees, but that's not conclusion, correct?
No, what I'm saying is the sight line that we're proposing is completely within the town right of way.
Yes.
So if we use that for access and egress to the site, we would have to do the clearing. So those two trees, the two make the trees would have to go. And there's our couple of trees that are identified on this newest plan that have to be removed out of the Net River. Based on what Jeff had said earlier about the first select person giving permission, so. So, um, anything, oh, there's a vegetation manual, anything over eighteen inches within the state right of way. Has to have a letter from the first elect person saying they're okay with that. D O T, as far as D O T is concerned, you can take everything. But if it's over eighteen inches, the first elect person has to agree to that. Now this is, I haven't heard this firsthand, but secondhand, I heard that, um, first elect woman. Is going to defer the planning and zoning commission as to whether they will rewrite that letter to remove additional vegetation.
Or, or in the alternatives to say that you're comfortable with the trees being removed to improve the sightline. And then she will be more comfortable sending the letter to the D O T to say it's okay to, that, that these.
Right, but.
But we're not even there yet.
Right, we're not there yet. And even if we did remove the two trees to improve the sightline, that's not a guarantee.
Oh, we wouldn't remove them unless we have approvals.
Right.
And we don't have approval for the property on the other side.
Oh, no, we won't get approval for that.
Yeah.
But we don't need it now based on the eighty fifth percentile of passenger. Only for trucks, which we want to exit from Stonewall. But you're not supposed to be the only one that's. And that's, that's what we're pursuing.
And those would be limited to eight and morning to noon.
Yeah, the compromise seemed to be a good one.
And we thought so too. And that's why I believe, well, they had a team meeting at D O T this afternoon. This is what I heard. Uh, I was out in the field. Um, so there, after their team meeting, their biggest concern was D E P approval. Well, we had D E P approval. They were not aware of it at the time. I sent it to them at three thirty today and I did not get a response to that. So I do believe we will be getting D O T approval because that is the only thing that makes sense. And if I could get a supplement for S L R without a full blown tracking.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
And, you know, it is the safety issues. And when you drive, I mean, you can just drive down the post road and see. Um, Stonewall is not ideal for egress.
Just not, not to pat ourselves on the back, but though, our original plan was not to use Stonewalling at all.
Right, that's what we asserted.
And, and, and that, that was because we believe that that's the best way in and out of the site as well. The reason we're here is not because we're, we're in a dispute with the neighbors or we, we think it's more economically efficient to use it. The only reason we're here is because the state has told us, you can't do it. And now we've tried a number of variations to try and get that approval and not negatively impact the neighbors. And we thought we had it worked out and now we don't. And so.
But we may, right. And, but, and we're, we're committed to going forward because that is what we think is the best outcome. For all, for everyone, for us, for the neighbors and for the people coming in and using the restaurant.
So we're going to continue to do it, but we, we can't represent you that we've got it done here because we haven't.
Any other questions for commissioners?
Talked to the neighbor in the penthouse who's most affected by the exit onto Stonewall.
I haven't spoken with her directly. She's the one who has an engineer who I've worked with on another project who contact, I, who contacted me. On Monday, they get an update as to what was going on. I explained to him what progress we'd made on Tuesday. And thought that we had reached this resolution. When I found out this afternoon that we, that we, the resolution that we had wasn't going to go forward. I immediately called him and he, he assured me that he would reach out to the neighbor to let her know, or them know what was going on. So we've tried to keep the property that's going to be most directly impacted by what we're proposing in the loop as to what's been going on.
Okay, great. And the only time potentially we'll see headlights, middle of the winter when it's super dark. That's the only time headlights would be seen. Most of the traffic is what, between eight and twelve level. And that's ten vehicles. It's laundry, uh, alcohol, garbage and, uh, lint and food. Those are the only four deliveries.
And that, and that's ten deliveries.
So you think the pre two thirty deal is still possible? And the issue then is whether we are completely coming down to mature trees to make it more possible? Is that what this calls now is doing?
Well, well, no, what, what we're, well, ideally from our perspective, and I, I'm not trying to make you do. They're encouraging you to do something that you're not comfortable doing, but ideally we would like to get the amendment with the left turn approved. With the understanding that we are going to continue to pursue these, uh, access on the post road from the D O T. And as part of that, we would need this commission's blessing to remove those trees. To improve the sightline so that we would put the other option. It would bolster our ability to get the approval from the D O T. But part of the problem is that we're working off of information that we just received four hours ago.
So, so the question is that we cut, if we get permission for access and egress, those trees have to go. That's the only way we can make, get the sightline.
Wait a minute, that wasn't clear.
Oh, okay. That's why I'm, that's why I'm explaining. If we get permission for access and egress for the main entrance, center entrance.
It would only be if the trees were removed.
The trees can go.
Have to go along with some vegetation. What you said before was that if we improve the sightline, but there was no guarantee.
We don't know that the D O T is going to agree to the access and egress from the post road. We're trying to make it as palatable.
Right, so you're, you're assuming two options at the same time.
Right.
My understanding is you're looking for approval tonight on the left turn. And then, and then the other part is that you, one, D O T didn't have the information when they all met about D E P.
Correct.
And the second was in, in order to approve, so D O T's, it's going to be contingent on you having permission to remove.
Correct.
Think so?
Do we have any other questions? And if not, I'm going to turn it over to public questioning. For now, are we okay?
I just have the obvious question. How do those two trees compare to sightline? I mean, they're mature trees.
Yeah, I thought it can't be.
If you look at the sightline demand, that's the site. So it's your eye height's three and a half feet, X amount of feet back from the edge of pavement. You're sitting in your car, you look to the left. And those trees.
I saw the lines and, you know, and that's, that's what made me think, well, how is Stonewall Lane better? Because.
Carol?
Yeah, okay. It's, um.
Yeah, it's, it's, it wasn't our first choice.
Right.
It wasn't even our third choice.
And it's not your first meeting?
We're believing, we're.
Any other questions, Bob O'Connor?
No, not really. Uh, I, I did drive over there and stone, Stonewall does not look to me to be a good choice. I think we are all in heated agreement here.
Yeah. Okay. Well, if there are no other questions from the commissioners for now, I think, um, any attendees have questions? Yeah, I, I think I recommend directing our attendees to the front of the room so that they can be. Podium, that'd be great. Over this court, keep, you know, watch the courts.
Uh, thank you all. My name is Michael Carr, Seven Deer Run, uh, neighbor to, uh, to the, um, restaurant. The post restaurant. Uh, I just had a clarifying question I just wanted to ask, um, in, in terms of the process. But the June sixth meeting, um, it was understood that the state doesn't really dictate. A plan, but they could approve or, or disapprove of a submitted plan. Based on D O T and, and state issues. And it sounds like the state is starting to communicate some things here without a plan being submitted for approval or denial. And it sounds like we're all in agreement that Stonewall is not the best option for either pedestrian vehicles. Or delivery trucks, but the widening of what we'll now call the center entrance. Um, which is really the, the west entrance of the two, uh, it would be the best for everyone concerned. If the state had a plan that was approved by the town to say the east entrance is no longer usable. The west entrance, middle entrance will be widened so that it allows for flow, egress and ingress. And the Stonewall Lane entrance will no longer be used. And it's an approved plan from the town in full agreement by everybody concerned. The state then has something to decide to say, we either agree to this or disagree and here's why. But then it's very specific as to why they disapprove of you. And then you can get into the specifics of, do we really need to take this tree down to prove this? Because the town is not approving the Stonewall Lane exit or entrance. And they're not approving the east entrance or exit, just the middle one. And everyone else would prefer that. So what we heard in the June sixth meeting was that the state needs to have a plan to approve or disapprove. And it doesn't sound like that option has been presented as an approved plan.
If I could just respond to that. So, so this, the site plan application that was approved by the commission. In December of last year describes exactly what you described. No entrance on Stonewall Lane, using the central entrance as the main way in and out. And eliminating the eastern entrance by the neck river.
And was that approved?
By this commission? And that we submitted to the state.
Yeah, and it indicated that the eastern, eastbound entrance was going to close.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. And that Stonewall was going to be closed.
Yes.
And they disapproved that.
And that's what they got back to and said, we're not going to let you do that.
Any idea what the rationale was?
Yes, it was sightline. We needed a perpetual easement on, not only over the neck river. But also over the neighbor adjoining property just in the east.
This is for the middle.
Correct, correct. And I have a letter from the neighbors to the east that they will not grant.
Yes, that, that we.
So yes, we did, we did present what you were talking, that was the.
But we're all in violent agreement that, that Stonewall Lane has worse sightlines than the middle entrance.
Well, I don't know about violent. But I'm saying we are in agreement.
But that, but that was the plan that was submitted to the state and they rejected, so it was rejected.
Do you want to pull up the plan, Aaron, that shows the sightlines? Just maybe that helps visualize. I mean, I, I'm a visual person. I love to see that. Showing also showing what trees would need to come down. Yeah, that. So that's, that's the middle option. I'm not screen sharing yet. Thanks, Chuck.
Yep. So this dark line right here is our newest, uh, proposal. So you can see those two trees are directly in this line. So that's when, you know, the eye height is three and a half feet, your X amount of feet back from the edge of pavement where most vehicles would look. So this is the sightline now. We don't hit the adjoining property and we are almost a hundred percent within the state right of way. So that's this area here. The actual edge of pavement is right in here. So it's like twenty five, thirty feet from the bridge in. That would have to be cleared. And I believe we identified.
The bridge is there.
The bridge is there for sure, but I, we did put a couple of, uh, so there are a couple of, there are three trees that we identified with Xs through them. That will have to go in, because they are still within this site window. So anything to the south of this has to be removed. Of this dark line in here. And this is the four hundred and whatever, for whatever the feet is for the eighty fifth percentile.
And, and they would approve that without going over to the adjoining property?
Correct. This one, this one precludes us going to the adjoining property. Um, and this is only for passenger cars. The S U thirty vehicles still would have to exit out of here because they, they're too lumberous to leave here. They're, they can't get to speed. So that's all in here. It's all within the right of way. We don't have to bother the neighbors at all. We do have cam approval, which the D O T did, was not aware of at the time. And that's probably my fault for not giving them, but I didn't realize it was going to be an issue at the time. And we can't get rid of these two trees. This tree's already gone. We can't get rid of these two trees without the first elect person. Agreeing to it. And I believe she prefers the P. That's correct, Aaron?
Yes, in, in conversation with the first elect woman, she felt that land use. Applications were approved by the commission and, and would wait to hear from the planning and zoning commission before she followed up. Um, based on your action, then she would follow up with the state.
But the state vegetation manual says anything over eighteen inches has to be approved by the first elect person.
Do you know the diameters of those?
Uh, yeah, they're on there. Twenty four, I mean, they're big.
Yeah.
Let's see, uh, like eighteen, twenty four, whatever. They're, they're big. They're over eighteen inches.
Right.
So the, the challenge in the Stonewall exit of the parking area, it leaves the, the possibility for overflow parking on Stonewall. It, it also means that you're going to have more cars and trucks going to off property onto Stonewall. Into what most will deem, um, a less desirable entrance into Route One. You know, I think we're all in a tough place here, but, um, but it, it certainly seems like. The logical thing to do is to not approve the Stonewall and exit. And push back on the state for the widening of the, of the middle entrance. A little bit for others.
No, I, I, a hundred percent.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I'm just seconding one.
Well, you need to be, I was, I'm a chair. State your name and address, please. And, you know, it's great to be seen.
No, it's, uh, Steve Straka, uh, Sixteen Deer Run. And I just wanted to second what Mike said that, you know, we're, we live in that neighborhood. And trying to pull out there, the way Route One, um, the eastbound traffic, it's coming around a curve up a hill. You can't see it. It's very dangerous. So I just want to reiterate that. And so we need to work with the D O T to figure out why they rejected. That second, the proposal that was from prior, you know, this morning, because that, we were encouraged to see that. And so what can we do to work with the D O T to get back to that, the original proposal, which you did back in December?
I just wanted everybody to clear it. Even if, we would never be able to go back to the original proposal of December. Higher quota off Stonewall. If there would always, if, if they agree with the plan that we put. There would be an entrance onto Stonewall for the, for the trucks to get out of the property, to go down Stonewall and exit that way. It would not, the trucks would not be able to go out on the post road. I don't want anybody to think that there's not going to be an entrance on Stonewall. There will be if the plan that we thought was going to be applicable, approved, meet the, with approval from the D O T. Is ultimately what gets adopted.
And, and, and sorry, and in addition, those trees have to go if the D O T uses the entrance.
I understand. Get that clear. And so the, the S U vehicles, I guess, is what you're referring to.
Civil units.
Civil unit vehicles. And so those cannot exit from the, um, center entrance and exit because.
Because they're so, the, the sightline calculations, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'm relying on what others told me. The sightline calculations are determined in part by how quickly a vehicle can accelerate and get up to speed. So that it's not creating a hazard on the road that it's entering into. Passenger vehicles accelerate at a faster rate than trucks, delivery trucks. And so the concern is that if you have trucks coming out onto the post road from that center driveway. They're not going to be able to get up to speed fast enough. They're going to create a hazard. So that's why they need to go out on the Stonewall. Because it's from the state's perspective, it's an existing street. They can get out that way instead of on the post.
And, and to further explain what Jeff was saying, we couldn't meet the sightline requirement without an easement from the next neighbor to the east. So the sightline is increased by another hundreds and twenty feet, let's say. So we, so those trucks, they never leave there. We don't have permission for sight.
Okay. And, and it is felt that, that the sightline and all those requirements from Stonewall. Add to the Boston Post Road is better than the.
I, no, I did not say that. I said D O T doesn't care. They said, it's a city town. Yeah, no, it's not better.
No, but, but, but that's why with the, the limited number of vehicles that would be leaving from that. On Stonewall from that, from that access point and the hours that they would be leaving. We felt was not going to have a tremendous negative impact on the neighbors, where you, the neighbor would leave and the other neighbors.
It's ten per week and it'd be left turn only during daylight. At most.
Thanks, thank you. Yeah, it isn't that, doesn't the D O T, isn't there a mechanism for a hardship letter? So if like both scenarios are, you know, we, we've all agreed that the, the center exit is the, the safest. But isn't there a mechanism to get that approved through a hardship letter?
I don't know.
I spoke with Tracy May at the D O T and she mentioned that, that that might be the, the best option.
Do you have anything?
No, I spoke with her this morning. She said that there is a mechanism, um, with the hardship letter that can be filed with another division of D O T. Or scenarios like that. She mentioned that.
Like I said, we're happy to continue pursuing that, but we're also trying to advance.
Understand, yeah, and it's your. And it's your breath, but we'll stay.
Well, I think we all want to get to yes. And, um, I'm wondering if the SLR supplement, maybe not a full-blown traffic study, but something, and it would even support a hardship point claim or something, Aaron, does that make sense? I, I, I don't know about a hardship mechanism, I'm sure the applicant can explore that further and, and.
And I think we have talked about whether or not another traffic study was needed at previous meetings. So, you know, with this back and forth from DOT and, and approval and then not approval. It sounds like the best next step. Yeah.
So I think we also need to see what's, what's DOT thinking because they haven't completely responded to what, what's going on yet either, correct?
They may look at that CAM application and report and go, you know what? Now that we have it, we're fine.
Right.
But it still doesn't preclude the SUV vehicles.
But I'm saying it's an open question.
Yes, it is an open question, absolutely. And we, and we're going, we're going to pursue that. Okay, that's fine.
What would a traffic study do at this point? He's done one, when was it done?
Well, they didn't address Stonewall Lane as an egress.
That was never part of it.
Because, because we're taking away that.
And they commented on what they originally did, they're telling us.
I mean, well, I mean, it's part of the record, um, traffic study. We were closing Stonewall off, but I'll agree with, uh, the commission member, what's it going, I don't know what it's going to do, but, and my, uh, the owner has to agree to pay for it.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, you know, we're, we're all, you know, we always spend our money.
And then I think we need, you know, we need a, a site plan for exactly what we're voting on and not, you know, not. We'll do this and then we'll continue to do.
Well, that's why plan has been submitted, we have that site. And it's part of the record. It got late on, it was, you know, the last minute, but their site, and it does exist.
I think it's stated yesterday.
Yeah, it could be.
Yeah.
I wouldn't doubt it.
Madam Chair, I don't know if anybody else have comments, but we do have a hand raised.
Okay, let's go to that. Fran Brady? Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thanks, this is Fran Brady, 108 GNC Madison. I'm a co-founder of Mad for Trees and also a member of a team that's working on writing a tree ordinance for the, for the town of Madison. I will be brief, I just wanted to, um, emphasize a couple of things in my comments. Primarily go to the town planner, the P and Z board, and anyone else concerned with the natural beauty of our town. There were some quotes just now. One from the, um, the lawyer representing the applicant. Sightlines, those trees must go. Planning and zoning board, that was not clear. Those are scary, scary words to hear this far into the whole process for, from a guy that wants to see trees protected. I want to make a quick point. Uh, our, our team is trying to, uh, develop an ordinance that will help the town preserve trees as much as they can, but also to replace them. So knowing that this project's going to move forward, knowing that those significant eighteen inch, twenty-four inch, oh, whatever sized trees are going to have to come down now because of the sightlines have been changed. And, and of course, the trees that were also the American elm and other huge significant trees that were already taken down. Those trees, if we were, if we had a, a reasonable tree ordinance, like many, many other towns, um, those would be replaced at the expense of the applicant. And maybe it's not going to happen this time, but for God's sake, I hope the town, the planner, the board, anyone else will support the fact that based on this poster child of a case, that you will support a tree ordinance for this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify one point where you said that it wasn't clear about the trees. Early in the discussion, it wasn't clear, but later on, it was clear that that was part of the proposal with DOT.
Any other questions? Yeah, what? A couple of hands there. Jim Nordgren?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thanks. I'm sorry I missed the beginning of the meeting, I, I didn't get the notice that it was going to start, uh, an hour earlier. So if I, uh, if I missed the discussion, forgive me, but if you could just go over, I know the, uh, the DOT, uh, was discussing replacing the four mature trees that were cut down illegally in the, uh, DOT right of way. And as I recall, it was implied that it was up to the town's highest elected official, which was Piggy Lyons. Has that been resolved?
That's a question for the applicant.
We have, I, I had, the first select person hasn't indicated what she'd like us to do, so I can't say it's been resolved.
Can we get some, uh, 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 closure on that? It's, it's been a couple of weeks. I, as again, as I recall, DOT wanted those, uh, trees to be replaced if it was, um, desired by, uh, the town's highest elected official. Uh, the DOT letter said they were illegally cut. So I'm, I just want to get that resolved. Can you, can you keep that on the front burner, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Province?
Good evening, this is Alex Province, nine seventeen Boston Post Road. As you recall, last meeting, I was eager to help move this forward for the sake of the applicant, who I think has suffered quite a bit. And as a business person, I'm highly concerned for them. But the notion that we as a town are even considering removing more trees from this area is just mind-boggling. There is such community outcry for the act tree that was accidentally already removed. The thought that we would take down more off the Neck River, from the Neck River, um, in addition to the new school that we're building on the Neck River, a new potential bridge, uh, sidewalk crossing over on Green Hill Road over the Neck River. It just goes against everything that so many people in the community of Madison are saying is important to us. Uh, so yes, I'm sure you're going to ask, so what does, what is the solution? I still think an egress, it might not be perfect, but under Stonewall Lane with landscaping to protect the homes directly affected, uh, is still the best option. But removing trees, majestic trees, exposing the river. Some, uh, person, last meeting had met the, the fish that would be affected, it need shade. I can't recall the species, but, um, just absolutely mind-boggling. And I hope, um, the commission, uh, sides with me. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm thinking that safety first and I would like reassurance that the Stonewall Lane is a safer egress or not. Um, and if it's not, I think maybe that gives us more information to take back to DOT.
It needs something more than anything.
So I would encourage the supplemental SLR study to be done by our next meeting if possible, and if that's possible.
Yeah, everyone's so busy right now, I, too, probably won't happen in two weeks.
Yeah.
Would probably be, and I don't know where we are statute early.
Right, I was just going to, yeah, a little timeframe guidance.
It won't happen.
Chuck.
Uh, so the hearing opened on May sixteenth. You have thirty-five days to hold that meeting open, that brings you to July fourth. Um, your next regularly scheduled meeting, um, for applications really is July eighteenth. So that would be your, your next available date.
And you, you would need to extend to an extension, an extension journey being.
Yeah, yeah, two inches is way too short.
That would be great.
Well, I have to ask a client, please. I agree, it's all good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, this is so difficult.
What, what about the, they come back and say, listen, no matter what you do, you can get out, uh, in Boston Post Road?
And go back to the neighbors.
We don't suck. Yeah, then we write up an agreement, I think, of what the conditions are for that.
You have to have a solution. I've been moved and I have spent a lot of money in moving places and the site and everything, so I just can't.
We appreciate that.
Add an entry or not.
Or in line up, yeah. You draw your own. We'll do what we can to try and give you the information that you asked for.
Okay, thanks so much.
Madam Chair, you need a motion.
Could I have a motion to, uh, extend since public hearing to our July? Is that my? We've gotten an extension review. Was that even possible?
I'll get it written off, or I'll have, uh, you're seeing the attorney.
Thanks so much.
Okay.
Any discussion you have? Sending to the judge. Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Bob O'Connor, okay. Thank you. So frustrating, okay. Uh, next on our agenda is twenty-four dash seventeen. This is a petition for regulation text amendment. The applicant is Kelly and Kingsley Goddard. Petition to amend section three point eleven D for the Madison zoning regulations, special use regulations for farms in a residence district. Could I have a motion to open the hearing? And it's second. Favor. Thank you, I think that we can just step out. Yes, and, um, Kelly, can you hear us?
I'm sorry, yes, I can, I'm right here.
Okay, you just have to get Kingsley back.
Oh, did he leave?
He just stepped out. You're on Kingsley, okay, we're all here. The applicants are here, I think Kelly's on her iPhone and Kingsley, you're here in person.
Thank you.
Where's yours? Walk through what you're proposing.
Oh, um, yes. Yes. Amendment to move our, uh, no longer existing bond structure to the front property. We have dismantled it, um, piece by piece. Um, and we're going to try and put it up front. Our request is that it be less than a hundred feet from our local property line and that it be fifty feet, which leaves us plenty of parking. If you'd like to look, um, but it's.
First, maybe, Kelly, do you want to read what your proposed change, text changes? Or do you want?
Uh, I don't have it in front of me.
I, I'm going to screen share it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Okay. All right, do you want me to read it? We propose, let me see, so hold it. We propose section three eleven D, special use regulation for farm store in a residential zone to be amended to state, no building or structure used as a farm store shall be located within fifty feet of any side or rear property line. As we have lost our historic barn to develop, this change would allow us to reconstruct our historic barn, preserve farmland, and enhance the viability of the farm to exist into the future. Can I read you just that part, because that's the part that has the red? Yeah.
So the change is going from a hundred foot to fifty foot?
Correct.
Right.
Any questions from commissioners?
This is a permanent across for for everybody, or this is a special use? It would be for everyone who is a farm. You must have five acres or more. Right? Um, to have a fifteen hundred square foot retail space or, we're larger, but we are the right system.
Yeah, that's under D.
Right.
So we're exactly, are you proposing to build the barn? You have a map there?
Yes, this is going to be what you are familiar with our farmers. Stay on.
Yeah, we have a perfectly custom.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Do you want to pull it up? I don't.
I don't think we have any of it.
This is, right, so this is the application before you is, is a general text amendment.
Correct.
Which would allow a reduced setback, uh, for a farm store, uh, fifty feet potentially closer to a property line. But a farm store is an allowed use by special exception. And so anybody, uh, this, this regulation was, um, well, it was amended in, in various years, but essentially came into effect in twenty fifteen and has not been utilized since, uh, the adoption of, of the regs. And so I, I can scroll down here, uh, two farm stores, there are, uh, general provisions as, as, um, Mr. Goddard indicated, uh, five acre requirement, uh, maximum of one thousand square feet for farms of less than fifteen acres. Um, and, and fifteen hundred square feet, uh, of farm store for farms of fifteen acres or more. Um, there are parking requirements for the farm store. Um, there, there is however, a provision for, um, dependent structures, um, in, in a, on a farm, and they're, uh, permitting as of right. And so the, the task of moving the barn, um, within fifty feet of a property line, um, on, on the property is, is not prohibited by the zoning regulations. You know, buildings, uh, and structures devoted exclusively to agriculture or farming, um, are, are permitted as of right in the zone. It's the conversion of a structure to a farm store that then triggers a special exception process. So, um, as you're considering this, um, yes, it, it does consider the, the Goddards property at three fifty-three Boston Post Road, but any farm within, um, uh, the residential zones in the district. Um, and you currently have no permitted farm stores under this regulations.
Right, but they would still have to apply as a special exception anyway.
That's correct. There, there is a, a requirement, um, for a, a special exception.
Okay.
And I want to add that it did go to the regional planning. Yes, I can, they didn't see any problem.
They liked it.
The, um, yes, the regional planning, um, uh, commission did review their, their recommendation, um, which I think I indicated was to see if this affected any farms within five hundred feet of our municipal boundary. So as part of the application process, this application was referred to all of our adjoining municipalities as well as the regional, uh, planning, uh, commission. And there was no feedback that was received from adjacent municipalities.
Okay.
Uh, no feedback, uh, received except for one letter that is in the record, um, as a letter of support.
Okay.
Bob has his hand raised.
My question is, have been any notification of the neighbors or any data from them? If they think this is a good idea?
This is, this is a regulation text amendment, Bob, it is not site-specific like a zone boundary amendment. So this, there is no notification requirement of any abutters because it's not affecting one single property.
Okay, so the answer is no.
Yes.
It's a text amendment. At this stage.
So far.
Any other questions? From commissioners? Any questions from attendees? A hand up?
No question, but a comment.
Do you want to come to the podium?
Sure. Hey. Frank and Carol and Brenda, Tommy Lane, Jason with the Sunbury Farm. Uh, speaking directly to the text amendment. Everyone believes it's a very good idea. It makes sense. In particular, the substance in this case would move the barn to a more level um, position rather than being down the hill. And it would be the fault of the public and the farm would be better served by having this group. Officially, last summer, we heard many comments from those who attended the meetings on the town's, uh, future. And one of the things mentioned by a number of people were. And one of the things mentioned by a number of people were preservation of the farm. In this case, it's particularly symbolic because in the front of the farm, Barbary Farm, is the farm stand that had previously been for a number of years used by Anthony and Edwin Fowler in their garage to sell farm products from at Bauer Farm for many years before they donated their farm. Now, it is now probably going to be moved into the farm building. So symbolically, there's a continuation of the farm in response to what people were saying. It's the best we can do right now, but it's important that that connection is made. So I think it's a very good idea and it should be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Madam Chair, Erin Mannix, again, I did just want to submit my staff comments in the in the into the record right here and remind the commission that in in enacting or amending regulations, you're acting legislatively and not administratively, and therefore have broad discretion and remind you of the two-part test that is used to, that is applied to determine if the commission's legislative actions proper, which I don't have to read through those. Also, under Connecticut general statutes eight dash two, you are combined planning and zoning commission. You must also make a finding that i- if you are moving for an approval that the regulation or the proposed amendment is consistent with the plan of conservation and development, your P O C D, which is your master plan, and as you're aware, since we've spent two years on that, it it does establish the recommendations for future development of our community. And the zoning regulations are one of the tools that are used to implement that. And that would be the two thousand and thirteen plan of conservation and development.
Because the other ones, we have not.
That is not yet gotten final approval. Okay. Thank you, Erin. You're welcome. I think we're ready then to make a decision and I agree that we want to do whatever we can to save your farm. Thank you. And other farms in Madison. So I think it's a reasonable text amendment.
I agree.
Could I have a motion then? Oh, sorry.
I would need to approve the amendment.
Sorry, I have not closed the public hearing and moved to deliberation, so kind of close the public hearing. And a second. The discussion, sorry, my bad. And then we'll move to deliberations. Can I use jet lag as an excuse? We'll move to deliberations, so we just have its own discussion. But again, I think that the text amendment is a good amendment, not just for your farm, but for all the farms. And we want to do whatever we can to keep our farms.
Well, that'd be good.
And if we're all in agreement, maybe we can have a motion as it's been drafted for us by Erin, our town planner. I think Bob O'Connor is waving a hand behind.
Yes, let me try again to introduce this amendment. I think we should approve it. Do I need to read it?
Yes.
Voted that the Madison Planning and Zoning Commission approve application number twenty-four seventeen, petition for regulation text of text amendment. Applicant Kelly in Kingsley Goddard, petition to amend section three dot eleven D in parentheses four of the Madison zoning regulations, special use regulations for farms in a residence district as proposed. This approval is made based upon the fact that the applicant has successfully demonstrated that the proposal is consistent with the intent of and the goals and objectives contained in the plan of conservation and development, including encouraging economic development while promoting retention of undeveloped land in residential zones. The effective date of this approval shall be July nineteenth, twenty twenty.
I'm hooked on any further discussion. On favor. It's unanimous. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Norman Commission. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, panel.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have some pending applications. I think so we have on the agenda twenty-four dash sixteen for two fifty-one Boston Post Road that was passed. That could be tabled. And I motion motionable that. Will that be July eighteenth? Yep. Any further discussions? On favor? All right, so that's tabled to July eighteenth as well. And next on the agenda, we have twenty-four dash eighteen plus the coastal site plan for one fifty-nine Cottage Road, map thirty-two, lot three-one, zone commercial C. Owner Jeffrey Bailey, applicant Nick Anderson, site plan modification, I'm sorry, applicant is Nick Anderson. Site plan modification and coastal site plan to install ice vending machine and associated drainage system specifically designed to manage ice melt runoff. Includes establishing connection to the municipal water supply using existing infrastructure along Cottage Road to facilitate the operation of the vending machine. The applicant, like to come forward and identify yourself.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to review my application. Before I begin, I'd like to thank specifically Leah, who I'm with the town and helped me a lot with this process. It's the first time I've ever had to do something like this, so, you know, it's nice to be able to go to someone in our town to give me a hand with this all.
Great, so do I identify yourself?
Yes, Nick Anderson, I live at one seventeen Somerville Road in Madison. So I want to give you a little brief background and kind of how all this played out and why we're here today. So it was brought to my attention on Facebook a couple of months ago that the current owner Jeffrey Bailey was looking to sell the ice house. And I saw it on Facebook, thinking about it, like, it's so cool, it's such an iconic thing in our town. So I reached out to him, got to discuss the, you know, how it works, all that stuff. We came to an agreement and everything. We were looking more into, you know, how we can improve the ice house, seeing how we're limited by, you know, staffing hours and it's seasonal. Obviously, on days like today, selling ice is not an issue, but, you know, because it's only during the summer months, we want to explore ways to, you know, increase our offerings to those in our community. So we found this ice machine specifically, which would sit on our front porch. It's sized up accordingly, so it'll fit perfectly on there, and it requires us to hook up to the city water. In addition to that, we have to install a infiltrator drainage system for the ice melt runoff. Now, it's important to note that, you know, I did a lot of research on a bunch of these different ice vending machines. Little background on myself, licensed septic installer, and I do a lot of these drainage systems every day of my life. And it was very important that we found a specific ice vending machine that wasn't a filtration system, so it did not have a discharge to it. So what this machine does, it has a five-stage sediment filtration system with U B in it. So it the incoming, you know, city water, which you can drain, comes into the system. It goes through this filtration system and then out comes ice. So the drainage system that we requires for the machine is not for the filtered excess water. It's actually just for excess melt, ice melt runoff. So, you know, in the event that it's ninety-five degrees on Monday morning and there's not too many buying ice, people buying ice, you know, all the ice that's in there, if it melts, it'll go off into the drain. So I was spoke with Trent and we designed a, you know, infiltrator system that, you know, it's more than enough sized up to, you know, withstand, you know, the ice melt runoff and everything. So this is pretty much kind of what we're doing over there. And, you know, like I said, I appreciate you guys' time. Oh, that's actually, we'll have to answer any questions now.
So you've been working with Trent, who's our public health?
Correct, and Amanda as well, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Good, thank you.
Go ahead.
I I'm happy to screen share, Nick. I have your site plan and the renderings. You've got many that you want to go through.
Yeah, yeah. I'll kind of, if you want to go through this, thank you for reminding me of that.
Yeah, so what, you want to start with your site plan? Or your images?
Images look better.
Start here?
We'll go to the, go to the one that shows the base more, the cars, right there, that's good.
Okay. Let me get us.
So I don't know if any of you have visited the site, you know, recently or anything, but right now there's what's called ice merchandisers on the outside. They're essentially just storage, ice storage units. So our plan is to actually remove those ice storage units, kind of clean up the lot, make it, you know, a little bit more accessible for, you know, parking and such, and just clean things up. You know, the ice vending machine, like I said, is just going to be situated on a porch, very similar to what the ice merchandise is there right now. The size of it is forty-four inches by fifty-four inches in terms of width and length, so it's not like it's taking up the whole building yet. If you scroll down, we we have to put in some railing here. So we put in like a rope railing, so it kind of, it is still okay in terms of the fire marshal's perspective. I believe Erin and Maria worked on that today and signed up on all that. Up to their standards of, you know, so nobody falls off the deck, seeing how we're now inviting people onto the porch. One thing I did forget to mention, this ice vending machine is not influencing, you know, our existing business model. It's an addition. One of the things, I actually keep my boat in a little marina there and go fishing as much as I can, I'm not working. And, you know, go out in the morning at four thirty to go fishing. Unfortunately, nothing's quite open in this town. So I have to stock up on ice the night before, and half of it melts before I even get to the boat in the morning. So this allows those early morning fishermen to get to ice. That's really all this. We do plan on keeping keeping the tradition of staffing it, you know, I think that's important. That's what people sometimes go to the ice house for is just to have a friendly conversation over something, instead of just going to your local gas station.
Fishing.
Fishing, yeah, whoever, yeah, there's there's a million of things. So we we're going to continue that, you know, it's really just to, you know, those early morning fishermen, those late evening people staying at Hammond Asset, just a little bit more offering. And then, you know, one of the big things that Jeff brought to my attention was during the hurricanes that we had. Hopefully, we never have one in our town again, but we do live on the, you know, the coast, so who knows with things changing nowadays. But anyways, our, the ice vending machine is equipped to hook up to a generator. So in the event that there is power outages in our town, we could still supply people those who need ice with with it. Jeff said he sold out in like forty-eight hours during the last hurricane, because they were all out of power and
Yeah.
not really had generators anymore. So it's nice to be able to offer that to, you know, people in the community. So, yeah, this is pretty much the, in terms of the look of how it will look when nobody is working there, we'll close that off. And then when somebody is present on site, we plan on unhooking the net and, you know, coming back to that old way of, you know, opening people to the.
Serving from the.
Correct, yeah, the way it has been, so.
And Nick, you can mention that you did go to ACHA and met with them and you went through your options for railings. And really, that's the only facade.
Yeah. Yep, they were, they, so the actual vending machine, it was brought up that, you know, the color in here. And then we sent them over the actual color, it's a little bit more blue. The guy who did the rendering made it look purple, so they're, they brought that up. So, yeah, it's it's more blue. And, yeah, the net and everything, they were, they liked the idea, instead of having it like closed off, it's still that like warm welcome, you know? You put little buoys on it, kind of, yeah, fishing.
Fishing net largely.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, but it seems they liked it.
Safety first.
I like it, I think it's exactly, safety first, you know, we want to make sure that no one's going to get hurt or anything. But they like it, so.
Right, and so really, the the facade changes are what we would consider in the zoning regulations, a minor site plan modification, which could be done administratively by staff, but because of the location and the installation of the infiltrator, it does trigger a coastal site plan application. So that's really another aspect why why Nick is here. And I can, and and with respect to that, Nick did take staff Maria's suggestion and did have an updated site plan provided and as well as complete the coastal application. And we did today receive comments from D E P as well, indicating that there were no adverse impacts. He did go through, which I'm, you can read aloud if you'd like, or you can read, I did put those in my staff report too, what the coastal resources onsite and adjacent are. And that that really any potential impacts to coastal resources can be mitigated during the temporary installation of the infiltrator with E N S controls. And so Bob and others online.
By the location of it?
Yeah.
It should be in there, I believe, it's four, it's four, oh, four hundred and five feet. Now I remember when I met with it off.
Thanks.
I'm going to ask a dumb question, the deck can support five or six people close to the machine, but no problem?
Correct, yes.
And doesn't the machine have a condensation line on it?
A condensation line? Yes, that is the, that is the discharge line that. Yes, correct, that goes into the infiltrator. We don't want anything running out onto the street, it's all going to be continued from the ground.
Okay. That's all I need to know.
Any other questions? I think we're ready for a vote. Everybody, Bob O'Connor, you good?
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks, Erin, for those additional comments. Anyone like to make a motion? Would you say?
I'd like a motion to approve.
Second, any further discussion? John, can you read what we have?
Voted that the Madison Planning and Zoning Commission approved application number twenty-four dash eighteen coastal site plan. One fifty-nine Cottage Road, map thirty-two, lot three dash one, zone, commercial C. Owner Jeffrey Bailey, applicant Nick Anderson, site plan modification coastal site plan to install ice vending machine, associated drainage system specifically designed to manage ice melt runoff. Includes establishing connection to the municipal water supply using existing infrastructure along Cottage Road to facilitate the operation of the vending machine. As shown on applicant application documents with the following conditions. One, the zoning enforcement officer shall be notified at least forty-eight hours prior to commencement of any regulated activity. Two, at all times during the site work and until soil arrays are stabilized, the applicant shall install, maintain erosion and sediment control measures such as fabric and filter fence, state cave bales, and other measures deemed necessary by the zoning enforcement officer to prevent erosion and sedimentation. Three, the applicant applicant shall obtain any necessary encouragement permits prior to work within town right away. In the event that changes to the approved plans are required as a result of other agency permitting to support the proposed activity, the Madison zoning, Madison planning and zoning commission reserves the right to review said changes and may require modification of this approval. This approval is made based on the finding that the proposed use is permitted, is a permitted use in the district in that the standards prerequisites and conditions specified by the regulations haven't met. The commission further finds the proposed proposal consistent with all applicable goals and policies in the Coastal Management Act and section twenty-five of Madison zoning regulations. The applicant's effort to maintain adequate soil and erosion controls during temporary construction activities reduces potential impacts onsite and adjacent coastal resources. Effective date of this approval is June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it. Thank you, Erin, for your help.
Moving right along, twenty-four dash twenty-two, New Road, this is map sixty, lot eighteen, zone P D D, owner applicant one fifty-five New Road LLC. Site under review, proposed site plan application to construct a twenty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-one square foot, plus your minus medical office building and associated site improvements for approved master plan pursuant to section thirty-two.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Anybody having trouble hearing me?
No, ma'am.
No. May it please the court.
We're not there. Right, truth, wrong people.
Hi, I'm Attorney Marjorie Shanty, and I represent one fifty-five New Road Madison LLC. In this detailed site plan review, I'm here this evening with Kenny Horton and Anna Horton from the company. I'm also here with Michael Harton, Mark, Michael Harton, our professional engineer, site designer and civil engineer, John Wicco, the architect, and John Cunningham on landscaping. This detailed site plan review follows the commission's prior approval of the master plan for this development of the south side of New Road. I I I think because Erin's reporting goes into the detail, as will Michael, that I'm not going to be redundant here. I I will add this, however, in in connection with her reporting, is that the commission is reminded that at the time of the adoption of the P D D designation for both sides of New Road, and at the time of the master plan for the south side of New Road, first we had a draft report from S L R for the aggregate district, and then we had a supplemental report for the master plan associated with the south side. And and I want to emphasize because Dave Sullivan at S L R had made some recommendations, and in fact, some restriping has occurred. and in fact, some restriping has occurred that we have all found blessedly advantageous and are making it a, a better um, coming and going from New Road and from really Town Hall. Um, that the conclusion of the traffic report was that even without additional road improvements, the um, development works and, and that's an important element to keep in mind because um, to get, as we heard earlier this evening, getting D O T to, to come to the table and have that coherent conversation also entails in this case, the town of Madison. And while those, you know, the interest has been maintained, there has been no advancement um, in the governmental agencies. So the focus is redrawn to the manageability and the viability and the suitability of the scale of development as is. So with that, my, my team of experts will parade before you.
Thank you, Attorney Shansky.
Uh, for the record, my name is Michael Harkin. I'm a professional engineer and principal of Harkin Engineering located at seventy-eight Wolf Hollow Lane in the town of Killian, North Connecticut. Again, here tonight on behalf of our clients, one fifty-five New Road Madison LLC for their project entitled the Hammond Asset Medical Center project. So um, just to go over some housekeeping, the servant, the civil engineering firm of record is Harkin Engineering LLC. The land surveyor of record is the Anderson Engineering and Surveying Associates out of Guilford. Again, the applicant is one fifty-five New Road Madison LLC. Um, again, to restate that Kenny Horton, the president, and Matt Horton, the vice president, are here tonight. So uh, to go over it, you may remember you just had an application in front of you a couple of months ago, which was the north side of New Road. Um, I was here last year and we got the master plan approved for that. Uh, we also got the master plan approved for the south side. Uh, before we get into it, the original uh, master plan that you saw, we adhered to about ninety-eight percent of that. The only difference is we got approved for a larger building. We actually did a little bit. We made it smaller. So that's definitely real good. So I'm gonna go into detail on the project plan set, clean some civil set.
Michael, unfortunately the podium is blocking.
Sure.
Yeah, just over there.
No worries.
Yeah, whatever works and if it's on.
I just don't want to block any.
I'm gonna screen share the plans for you as you're pulling them up, sir.
That's what you guys.
Great.
For outside, even the audience.
Thank you.
Okay, so um, again, this is the south side parcel of New Road, New Road being here, uh, Duckhole Road and the connector being down in this area. Uh, the site is comprised of two point seven three one acres. Um, it abuts the state property and then this is the wood, it's part of the state property and then you have I ninety-five right here. So it's right direct um, off the highway and highway views. Uh, there are two drainage discharge from the town road system that discharge on the property. There is an easement for that. They are allowed to discharge on the property. Um, it's not a specific area that they discharge on. They're just allowed to put the water on the property. So we are in the, the P D D zone. Mark, Attorney Shansky and I were here a few years ago with that P D D. You may remember seeing us on that. Um, so in front of you is the detailed site plan. Again, the site plan virtually mirrors what you have previously seen. Um, again, the building right now is at twenty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-one square feet. I believe it was twenty-nine thousand when we came in front of you. It was about five thousand um, or seven thousand square feet bigger. We just shrunk it basically in the same footprint area. So um, as you come down New Road, up of Duckhole Road, um, you come in and our entry driveway is located as far east as possible. It basically mirrors the driveway on the north side, so it's almost like uh, an intersection. The reason both driveways are there, it has the best site distance for safety. You heard a lot um, tonight about safety. So it does have the best uh, site distance. Again, um, to reiterate what Marjorie had said, it's S L R. Actually did our detailed um, analysis as well, um, on both the intersection and this area. So we have our entry driveway. We have one lane in. Coming out, we have two lanes, a left turn lane to town and a right turn lane towards Duckhole Road. As you come into the site, it's twenty-four feet wide, natural side for basically a roadway, so you can fit trucks, you can fit ambulances um, and delivery vehicles. As you come in, if you're a medical professional, if you're a staff, you take a left, you have your own parking area in this vicinity. We have two E V charging stations for cars there. Again, we have the required loading zone in this section too, so the loading of uh, equipment or materials will come in through the back entrance. We also have the garbage and recycling in the same place we had it before. Uh, that is a architectural design feature. Uh, John Wick, our architect, will be discussing it. He does have a uh, a rendering of that that he designed, as well as uh, John Cunningham has virtually put in landscaping in order to block the views from um, from New Road. Again, we also have our generator. Um, it's emergency backup generator because it's an office medical use. Um, so that is located again within the building setback lines. The generator will meet all the desk full levels of the town of Madison, um, further requirements. So as you keep traveling down into the site, the front of the building is where it's always been. Um, kind of in the back of the project site, uh, that is the front. You can see the spur of circulation. All driveways are twenty-four feet wide. You can get uh, the fire trucks around there and bigger vehicles if necessary. We have a main entrance area with a covered porch, so if um, somebody needed medical help or medical treatment, um, you know, to our doctor's visit, they can pull up um, and be uh, shielded for rain and things like that. The handicap parking spaces are located adjacent to that main entrance. They're also located um, against the sidewalk area that we have here. And again, it's one percent handicap access into the front of the building. Uh, per ACAS, we did go to ACHA. We do have full ACHA approval on this. They had um, asked that we put in a bike rack, which we have done right here centrally located. Um, and another site feature that we added for the tenants and anybody walking from the residential component is we added a small picnic area for outside even. You may remember that in order to link up the project site, we had that sidewalk. And we left that sidewalk in, but we also linked it to the picnic area and to the front of the um, medical building. As we go out through the site, uh, you can see we have another two E V charging stations in this area, so we have four onsite altogether. As we work down, we have all the parking for the uh, patients or whoever's going to be using it, other workers. Uh, we do have a parking breakdown. We have a hundred and sixty parking spaces, five per one thousand square feet of building. It's actually five point two when you break it down. Uh, because we are in the P D D, we need all the bulk standards for lot size, front yard, side yard, rear yard, lot coverage and uh, building height as well. So we meet all those bulk standards. We have a five to a thousand parking ratio. The master plan before, I believe, had uh, four to a thousand, I believe, was approved, so we actually bettered that percentage by shrinking the building. Um, so we go on to the detailed site development plan, which has all the utilities. Um, we do have gas, we do have water, every source is right here, so we do have electrical. Uh, so we'll be coming in with the fire service. We need a fire service for this building for the sprinkler system and then we need a domestic line as well. They will be coming down tying into this area of the building. And then we have a gas service tying into this section. The underground utilities will come here to the transformer on the right side and then come into the building. So firstly, we're taking all the utilities and bringing them into here and not having to come down through the, the back of the building. And one of the reasons is the slope is actually, the, the area back here is actually in a hole about eight feet below the surface of New Road. Right? And with that being said, the guide rail for New Road ends in this vicinity. And because we're in this vicinity, we met with the town engineers and they suggested that we have to, I don't know, die and put in this metal guide rail just to protect anybody coming over into this building area. Um, it will be the new style metal rail that they had put in here and they asked us to put it in the actual detail on the detailed sheet, which is the metal beam rail, um, the type R fifty-three fifty that they wanted, so we took care of that. Um, as we go down, you can see we have the building. Uh, the building is pretty large um, in impervious, so we're gonna have a lot of runoff coming off the roof. You can see in the four corners, we have the actual roof leaders tying into the drainage system. They're not discharging to grade. It's a large footprint, so we're putting in storm drainage system. All these ash lines you can see is a full storm drainage network with catch basins, manholes. You can see all the inverts and the pipe sizes accordingly. And then we have a discharge point into an infiltration basin. Before all the water gets out and discharged into that infiltration basin, we have a hydro works separator that's gonna take up and clean any of the water as it comes out. Um, I will get into it later on. We are in an aquifer, water company aquifer, same as the north side. Um, so we, we touched base with the engineers on the other side. Um, they're actually friends of ours and we work hand in hand. We saw the letter that the Connecticut Water Company had given to them. We implemented what they had required on that into our project. So such things as four foot deep catch basin sumps to collect all the sediment. We've added uh, hoods to all the catch basins, uh, so the sediment and debris stands uh, in those catch basins. We do have a, a post-development plan for the storm drainage system that has to be adhered to. Um, it's a detailed um, document that usually gets filed on the land records with it. It's every year what has to happen if there's any salving or sanding and the cleaning of it.
Maintenance.
It's basically a big maintenance plan. Um, so the infiltration basin itself is located in the furthest west of the corner of the site and the reason for that, if there's any debris here, it doesn't fall into the infiltration. Um, the soils on the site are beautiful sandy gravels. Between these two sites, we dug over forty holes on it. Uh, because it's sandy gravel, it has a great infiltration rate. Hence, we have an infiltration basin and we're putting what we call groundwater recharge because we have impervious area. The uh, Connecticut water likes to see water getting, clean water get put back in the ground to replace the odd. So that's what we're doing with that. Um, we had designed the infiltration basin. You can see the drainage calculations here for the ten-year storm. Let me take a little step back. You may remember that I had the drainage coming in, coming across here. Um, again, we met with the town engineers and went over it. Um, obviously we can't have water spilling right down in the middle of the project site. So we came to an agreement where we would extend their pipes and put in a series of manholes, collect their water and have it come around the infiltration. Okay, um, because we are doing that, the town engineer had required that we put a twenty-foot easement on here granted to the town, which we agreed to. Um, we would have to go through Erin and the town engineers with our, um, with our attorney to, to get that documented and approved. And then also a blanket easement over the site so they can actually come onto the site and fix the piping if they ever need to.
Charge it with the easement and they would own servicing that run.
They would because it's their pipe and their water. We're installing it, but it's theirs. It's kind of like the, the guide rail. We're installing it and they maintain it. Um, so again, on the drainage calculations, we designed for a ten-year storm event, which is generally a state requirement. Um, the town of Madison's storm drainage regulations don't call out for a design storm. There is nothing. You go to other towns, they say design for the hundred, design for the fifty, design for the two. Madison doesn't have one. We took it upon ourselves to design it for the ten-year storm event. Um, I met with uh, Rob Russo, one of the town engineers, and he had indicated that, hey, we might want to see the twenty-five-year storm event. And I was like, well, somebody's gotta tell us and he was gonna go back to Johnny Iannaco and find out. Um, I met with him again on Monday and he said he was gonna meet with him and get back to us. He never did. Um, but what he did say is that he would get a chance to look at it in the future, um, prior to the next meeting, I hope. Uh, the thing is he is going on vacation. He put that out to me, so.
Okay.
Um, you can see right now this detention basin, size for a ten-year storm. Just to, to give you a little perspective, it's about two and a half times the size of this room for the ten-year storm. We left enough room in this area. If they do require it to get bigger, we can house the twenty-five to fifty. They just have to tell us and, and we'll be able to accommodate that. Um, so, uh, and they may come back and say the ten-year storm is fine. We just don't know yet. So um, another item that we uh, we designed into the plan is the septic system that you see here. Okay, it's a centralized septic system. We do have uh, soil testing in that area. We do have full approval from Trent on this. Um, we have a letter from um, April seventeenth approving the septic system, so that's all set. Our following design page is basically all the stuff for the septic systems, the latest test holes that we have here, the design and all the requirements and inverts they need to install um, the septic. The next part of our plan set is our erosion control plan. We have a specific erosion control plan for the site, which shows where to plant the silt fence, where to put the state cave bales. If we get into grading of this bank, which we have to, and there start to be erosion, we have erosion control blankets and size called out on the actual manager and, um, and, and actual unit to be used.
It's pooping.
When the storm drainage goes in, all the catch basins will have cave bales around there, so no silt gets in them or we'll actually put silt sacks in there just so we don't have that dirty water getting in there, um, for the ten, for the worst requirements. And then the last sheet is our typical detail sheet. It's got all the requirements from D E P as far as dust control. If it gets dusty when we're working out there, um, the best management practices, where they can and can't um, fuel their machines, especially because we are in an aquifer. Um, it's all spelled out. Again, we have the catch basins hoods that the Connecticut water likes, the four foot deep sumps. Uh, we have called out the actual hydro works separator to clean the water. Again, we have the guide rail required by engineering and then we have a water quality volume calculation. So um, today was brought to my attention that we needed to update this calculation. Uh, I think Erin had sent me an email. Um, we looked into it. It took me sixty seconds to change the number. We had a number of one inch requirement. Uh, the new requirement that they want is one point three inches, very, very small increase. It took us sixty seconds to plug it in the calculation and spit it back out. We do, for the record, will submit it tonight. It only changed that pond by that much. There's so much, the pond is so significantly sized, it had very minimal effect in it and you probably wouldn't even see it to the naked eye. We're talking decimal points as far as water increase. Uh, but again, it is grossly oversized even for the tender storm bedding. So with that being said, and just to recap what we have going on as far as approvals. Um, we do have ACHA approval. Uh, we've gone there a couple of times. Um, and we'll get into the building. Uh, Mr. Wicco, we'll start going over that. Um, we do have health department approval. As part of this application, because we are in an aquifer, we're required to notify the Connecticut Water Company, which we did. We sent the letter and then we sent it into Erin, so she had it for the record. Um, me, because I'm so anal, I actually do engineering for the Connecticut Water Company. I didn't hear anything back from them in a week. So I actually sent an email to the uh, one of the senior engineers and I said, hey, can you look into this for me? Uh, he contacted Jessica Baldwin, who's the head of their environmental department. Uh, I got an email at four o'clock today, you know, it's up in the board. Just heard back from Jessica and our lands department from most recent documents from December twenty-third uh, for the project on New Road. She's going to check our mailbox at the main building in Clinton. So we are on it. We, we did check the box. We did notify them. We are in contact with them. And anything they get, we will add in the plans when we have to put the final set into the building department. Uh, we did submit the uh, maintenance plan, the stormwater maintenance plan. It's a three-page document. How to clean the oil water separator, when the suckout, um, the, and the uh, catch basins and when we have to submit reports. Uh, the drainage pumps are here. Again, we're just waiting for engineering on the uh, which storm event. We have full capability of making it as big or as small as they want. We're hoping they say two-year storm. We can reduce the size. Um, and then we have the updated water quality buying calculations here and uh, again, it has the, the one point three that Erin was looking for. Um, and again, we adjusted everything according to it. So with that being said, I'd like to turn it over now to John Wicco, but before I leave, I just want to show you. So it's a complete application. We do have a full photometric plan with the lighting and. Those documents and well as we do have a full landscape architect plan with John Cunningham.
Great. Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sure.
Absolutely. Good evening, John Wicco, architect, uh, at fifteen-eight Process Street in Milford. Um, I designed the building for the site and I can go over that. Uh, professional office building, twenty-two plus size. Um, it's designed for either multiple tenants or single tenant for the whole building. So there's flexibility to the, to the building itself, footprint wise. It has um, elevator that's capable for medical use and requires stairs and standard colors. And then the the pit outwork will come later once we know who's going into that. Two floors, uh pretty much identical. Lobby up in the front section. The elevation is probably a good place to to talk about that. This, the entrance elevation picks the the canopy, which uh and this fronts the parking lot. Um we designed the building um with architectural components being at the corners because the site circumvent the site started from the highway for coming from the south and going in and that Mike described. So we have, the building is has all fronts, so it looks good from everywhere. This is the front entrance with the canopy, the parking and the the corner tower, which has the um the tenant signs. Um we designed it in a contemporary style with either it's a panel system, all these lines, and you make the panel sizes, it's either a uh a limestone uh stucco or a architectural metal. Uh we've been approved for both. This is the the front of the road, a new road elevation. Again, you have the tower, so you drive around and then you get the ribbon windows that kind of carry you through. Stained or uh tinted glass. We're using um the color scheme that rendered in gray. We have options for a tan and blue building depends on who's going to be uh in the building itself. That's a general overview, all the particulars that everyone has talked about already, so we're going to have to rehash that. Is it just easier if I put my board up?
Can you have a colored rendering, John?
Yeah, that's enough to. Good evening, John Pining, T E C Lansing Design. Uh not, I mean, this is what both Mike Carkin, excuse me, and John Whitco have gone back over, new road here, okay? I think colored version is a little bit easier because you can see what the different varieties of plant material and areas are going to be. So moving in the main drive, the building, as Mike and John have shown. We are going to have this outdoor seating area, going with a bike rack back on this side. One decided exactly. They kind of put an arc thing in. Mike had a little bit different, but it is going to be in this area of the building. I got landscape plan very simple. The list is down here. There are large shade trees. At the tree that's over fifty feet tall. They're used along New Road. Inside the parking lot, we moved back into medium shade trees. And I expect out um Acer compes tree, which is hedge maple or zelkovan surrender. I usually give myself two different options, case one tree is not available. Down the board that we the board can use it. These beds in inside the parking area will have a low ground cover and shade trees in them. As Mike said, photometrics plan is on staff. These are also going to have uh double headed lights back in here to illuminate the parking area. Um the site itself is a wooded site right now with uh red cedar. Okay, you can see that all the red cedar are really coming down. The area that's a long new road is really full of invasives. It's been cleared before, so it's not red cedar. It's all the different invasives that that we really want to remove. Our game plan is to probably clear to almost New Road, okay? Down to this dark colored sun for this dark colored ink down here, okay? If anyone knows New Road, if you're coming down New Road, there's a terrific red oak on the corner which we're leaving. Okay, that's really the only real tree on the site that's really worth working back around. So this area, this dark brown area is an area that we're not touching. That's staying as is, okay? This light green area, it's going to extend. This is where the guardrail and right about that. This is going to be clear and that the sumps removed. But it's going to be returned to a natural conservation mix, so it's not going to be maintained. It's going to be like a field, probably once a year, every two years, the invasives will come out of this area, but it's going to be left as a natural area. The lime green is going to be maintained lawn. You can see that we come in, we have maintained lawn by the entrance way. I think it's going to look really nice if the maintained lawn is going to go up to New Road and then just gradually slope down to this new building that John's designing, okay? Uh the dark green planting beds, because that's why I think that sometimes a colored renderings are a little bit easier to follow. Mike said there's going to be a large basin down here. I reintroduced, because I love red cedar, I reintroduced new red cedar, so it's softened from the parking area. One of the board members, I'm on ACHA in the town of Madison, one of the board members uh asked if we could uh add some pollinators back down in this area. I think it's a really good idea, okay? We'll probably not do it in perennials. We'll probably do it in pro truck material, dwarf club or something else could help somebody. And those will be back down in this area also. Really a nice application. I think it's going to be a nice addition.
I'm having a little trouble comparing the architectural drawing with the landscaping, so are those trees there?
No. Yeah, the other asking question, the the elevation would really show the building. John just added some trees to give some scale.
And then and the other, the other panel that you have, you show uh mature trees kind of behind the building, I think, but
that might be we sometimes we get, we go too far with with uh yeah, let's see, that's
So that doesn't reflect the plan.
It does, but it's it's here.
Sort of looking over.
Way up there, so it's like off property.
Okay.
We we like to make it look pretty, so we take some liberties once in a while.
Okay.
But yeah.
Just wanted to get.
And there is some vegetation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's a really good question on all on on all different professional levels. Uh you would look at Mike Carkin's plan for engineering, you look at John's plan for way details of the building, and you look at my plan for really quote plantings. So these trees are going to go where they are. So this particular tree not even is going to be in front of the building. But this is going to help soften the view from the road back down to the park.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Thank you.
Let me jump back in uh real quick, just a couple items. Again, for the record, my name's Michael Harkin, uh professional engineer. I had mentioned when I was doing my uh presentation about the dumpster enclosure. We do have an architectural dumpster enclosure uh designed by Mr. Whitco. It's on his uh architectural plan set, S D one. So we do have that on there again, and uh that sign, we will be coming in for a separate sign application. I believe we had discussions with Aaron Maria on that. Um it's kind of just a general rendering of the sign that we had submitted to for ACHA, um just to get their customary approval before getting here. So we just wanted to make it a complete application. So actually again, um we do have obviously architectural plans. We do have a civil package. Uh we do have the landscaping plan. We have the photometrics. Uh we have ACHA approval. We have health department approval. We spent time with town staff um working on this. We just didn't submit it. We worked, met with Aaron. We met with Maria on it. Um we met with the town engineers on this. Uh I believe the only thing that we have lacking is input from the drainage, which was really a minor thing. In our opinion, we have enough area to make it larger. We would hope that that the commission would take that into consideration. Uh the commission has in the past made a condition of approval. Uh we have no problem with making the engineering comments a condition of approval. Um you guys have done it in the past and um honestly, we can't go to the next step and get a building permit without getting those right, you know, getting those drainage cubs in and getting signed off by engineering. So um we're hoping that you look favorably upon this application. Um we get approval tonight, so we can actually start moving on to the next step. My my fear is that uh the town engineer is going away on vacation. He doesn't have the time to give us the information back for the next meeting. And then we don't have time to redo what he wants for the meeting after that. So now we're weeks and months out. Um we'd like to to get the approval tonight for the simple fact that we can move forward with doing a little clearing on the site because we have to get the geotech rigs in there to be able to drill down for the uh the foundation design, so Mr. Whitco can do his final building plans. Um with that being said, as that goes on, we can address all the town engineers' comments. You know, with regards to the drainage cubs, and then we'd be ready to submit to for the building permit. Now, you have to realize at the building permit, engineering gets to look at it again, health gets to look at it again. Aaron gets to look at it again. Everybody has to look on it and sign off at this juncture. So um with that being said, thank you for your time. I'd like to turn it over to Marjorie. She's got anything else?
I don't. I would, we are curious as to the commission's disposition. What what you prefer to do given the information we've provided.
Thanks. Um yeah, we still have, I mean, there are a couple of things that are still outstanding that I would feel more comfortable um making a decision in addition to the storm calculations that are pending, and I'm sorry that our town engineer went on vacation, but you're waiting also for the Connecticut Water.
Connecticut Water is not a requirement for your for your uh voting. It the regulations require that Connecticut Water be notified. And it is a matter of record that indeed Connecticut Water has been notified. The correspondence is in the file. As Mr. Harkin said, in the event that they have comments, he will conform, is designed to their comments as as uh Mr. McAvoy did across the road when they asked asked for the wooded um sumps and 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 the additional details that they requested, which he incorporated and which Mr. Harkin has anticipated and incorporated in his design. So from a regulatory perspective, the requirement has been satisfied. I appreciate what the chair is saying, but just for the record, there's a distinction between their action and the requirements.
I had a couple of questions. Uh the generator, back up, it's gas, it's gas bed?
Yes, sir. Um I can show you. We actually we went a little step further in our project plans. It's actually, we showed the we showed the gas feed and the electrical line back going into the building. Reason being is the gas and electric company have real strict requirements on separation distances. So our generator is here. It's being fed through the gas line that comes out of the building here, and then the electric line comes back and feeds it.
Okay, and um did you say it it's top, it ties into the town sewer? It's not septic?
It is septic, yes, sir. Yeah, and we do have full septic approval from the health department.
Okay, so it's full septic, okay. I may have this wrong, but I thought at one time, one meeting previously, it just might be the property to the neighborhood that there was a neighbor was concerned about head that got their life spaces in their homes across from one.
It was from the residential side.
Across the road.
North side.
Yeah, right, right with the hands.
And you you have done something to readdress the traffic directions. You changed the intersection and moved things more south or is that?
We were hoping to, yes, the traffic engineer studies.
So you, oh, so you haven't done that yet, but that's your plan?
Yeah, I mean, it has to be looked into again, and that's kind of what Attorney Shansky had said going on. It's something that has to be worked with with the town, with DOT.
That's still in the development process.
Yeah, they don't even, honestly, they don't, won't even look at this until it's an approved plan. Because the DOT, it it's really nothing. It's just floating there. Once it's approved at the at the town level, then then they can even start the process.
The salient distinction again being that the development works even though Mr. Sullivan made the observation of traffic improvements. If the state and the town don't coordinate and move that forward, that's there within their jurisdiction to make that election. And the um from a conditioning perspective, it's not appropriate to condition an approval based on unknown actions of entities that are beyond our control. Which is why I'm saying, and I apologize for the redundancy, that the conclusions of a traffic report are that this development works as it is.
That's where you have to go, I can tell.
Correct.
But but your intention was to improve that intersection.
Our intention was to be party to something that if others were advancing it. Um but it, you know, it would not be appropriate for it to be an open ended, you know, ten years from now, they finally get their act together. That's theirs.
Madam Chair, one question not related to traffic, um it's second question. Is this a a public uh state health approved system beyond local or is it just a local?
No, so when we submitted it, Trent had said, or Amanda had said that it was going to go up to the state. It actually ended up, it's smaller flows that Trent approved it. Okay, so it's not.
Does not, does not have to go.
Sign off, correct. And that's one of the things that years ago, when we met with Connecticut Water and actually we went up to DEP with both the sites, because we were going to do something else on the other sites, um they had said, hey, try to keep the sewage levels as small as you can, um which we did, so we kind of kept it out of the the state's hands by doing this.
Nice. And is there a food service capability in the building at all?
No, um you know, I'm going to turn that over to Kenny, um Kenny or Matt, because we had discussed, you know, what they were going to do. I believe it was a, correct me if I'm wrong, just a cafeteria to to sit. They're not going to be carrying any food. It's out of correct saving. They're going to be bringing and have a place to sit inside the building to eat their lunch or go out to the picnic area. Just there probably be like a break room where there's a coffee pot maybe or a microwave to heat something up or a refrigerator, but there's no food processing there.
Any other questions, thoughts? I I still would rather.
I I appreciate that, but it's really the one issue.
Yeah, well, I think there are a couple of outstanding issues. And you know, I think we're we're learning that it's better to wait till we have every, all the information that we need rather than go through what we've seen us going through earlier in the evening even. Um not that they're the same, but.
So you're waiting for the five and twenty five foot beer?
The the storm calculation.
So they won't tell us what to design to because your regulations don't tell us.
Yeah.
We designed a state standards, ten year storm event. They had bought up, they select what they want on a case by case basis. How am I supposed to know that?
Is that, is that the one?
That and the Connecticut Water response.
Again, the Connecticut Water is beyond our control.
I understand.
And beyond your regulatory requirements, so it's appreciated and heaven knows if we receive it, we'll share it in a timely fashion, but.
And I don't mind that being a condition of approval. We've already had this stuff in. If you want to make that a condition of approval, we mean the town engineering comments as well. It it's, we have to need that. We we have to to get to the next step.
Yeah.
And then they get to look at it all over again. You're you're one customary step. We get the information from them. We make those changes. We still have to submit for a building permit, engineering, zoning, everybody still looks at them again.
I I can clarify that. The engineering department will not be reviewing at the time of the building permit. This is the time that the engineering department is reviewing the application.
They can finish their review, that's fine. The other thing that Connecticut Water is concerning only because we have no control of it now. And it's beyond your requirement, but well, Dorvus. He's spoken to or in touch with Jessica at Connecticut Water, who was the author of the letter on the outside.
Right, she was. Yeah, she actually.
I had to chase it down.
I think she was on the weapons commission.
Is there another thing, Manager?
I'm just going through our list here. That was the 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 stormwater, you know, combines with the stormwater regulations and 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 having conversations. I've had a conversation with Marjorie today as well, um and the town engineer, um and assistant town engineer, uh where they did indicate that they they do want to review the um stormwater calculations and the drainage plan um and be able to provide comments. And now is the time to do that. This is the time at the time of site plan approval, yes, um to re to to do that, so.
Michael, you know, when he's going on vacation? Michael, can you when he's flown on vacation?
I can, it's dead, but I think it's like, it's coming back next week, I think.
Rob Russo, the assistant town engineer is away until next Wednesday, the town engineer is here. The next regular meeting of the commission for business is the July eighteenth meeting. The two weeks would be July fourth and um the July eleventh meeting is in the fourth place. And that is um our public hearings on the plan of conservation and development.
Well.
And so that is what.
Regular, regular meeting business has been kicked to the eighteen. Yeah, we'll be happy to come back on the eighteenth.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I just need please, Erin, is are they gonna reach out to us, or should we be reaching out to them? We just wanna have ample time if you have something to adjust it prior to the eighteen, so I don't wanna come back there and say.
Yeah, exactly.
They, you know, they kind of leaves us hanging.
I would be on the phone with him tomorrow morning, like. I agree.
I do, yeah.
Sure.
I'll just see see everybody and keep you knowing, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, everything looks great so far, just need to wrap it up, thank you. Madam Chair, that would, we would need to um. Table, have a motion, can I have a motion to table this application to July eighteen? In a second, any discussion? On favor? Okay, so that's July eighteen.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay.
Sorry, Bob.
Twenty four dash nineteen, looks like the bank plan, twenty six Nathan Blaine.
That's a good point.
This is map thirty five lot twenty eight zone transition T owner Judith Pope, family trust, is that right?
Well, that that is our next item on the agenda, and that public hearing is scheduled for July eighteenth meeting, so there's no discussion on that matter.
All right, so we're on to.
Mister Down is here on the receipt.
Twenty three, this is twelve and eighteen Beethman Place. Map ninety one lots seventeen, eighteen and sixty eight dash one zone R U two. Owner applicant Susan B. and DeWitt P. Zeus the third. And Stephen Perry lot line revision to modify common property line between lot seventeen and lot eighteen. In addition to this conveyance, lot seventeen will be combined lot sixty eight dash one.
Yes.
That makes sense to you.
Yes, and and shortly it will make sense to you to.
Thank you, could you tell us your name?
Yes, I'm uh Bob Down, I'm a professional engineer and licensed lands foreman. On my business, uh Don Henry. And this is um essentially a surveying um issue. And the only reason we are here is because we're combining a lot from the. Swat, uh Swatma Hills.
Strathmore?
Strath.
Strathmore.
Strathmore Hills subdivision uh that created Saint James Court, there was this um parcel. Um number sixty eight dash uh one. That is owned by Stephen Perry, he also owns um lot seventeen. And that ninety one, and we are combining those uh two parcels. And we're removing, on your plan and on this exhibit, in green. Um are the existing lines, we're taking away this line here. Making uh Stephen Perry's lot actually conforming with zoning now. And we're conveying six thousand uh plus square feet to the neighbor Zeus, so that he can own his driveway. Um so we could not, technically, we could not make the conveyance to Zeus. Um prior to uh combining the two lots, because because we'd be making a uh. Uh increasing a nonconformity for Mr. Perry, so we're merely doing. We're correcting two things, we're improving the Zeus lot size, we're not making it conforming, but it's improving it. And they own their driveway, and then we're making Stephen Perry's. Uh lot conforming because we're getting his uh lot size above seventy thousand. We are also accommodating um Mr. Perry on the sale of his property. Um he has a, is installing a new sanitary system. And the better test holes happen to be on lot sixty eight dash one. And so now that it's uh going to be one lot, uh there's no problem with. Um having to do sanitary easements, et cetera, I did not do the sanitary design. Um but I do show the sanitary system. Uh done by Tony Urbino, um was the design.
So this isn't total altruism, but it's close to it.
It's it's very close to it.
But it's a win-win-win.
It's a win-win situation, yes, and we end up with uh we end up with two lots. Uh one more conforming, one conforming, and that's it. Uh the this green line, this separate lot, and I'm not sure why that was. Made a lot from the subdivision, because it never conformed.
It says not a, not a building lot.
It says not a building lot, but it's made a separate lot, and fortunately, uh Stephen Perry owns them, owns that. And he can combine them, put in a new sanitary system, and he has a contract to sell his house actually. So it's a win-win-win. And, yeah.
Little questions? Seems pretty straightforward, Bob O'Connor, any questions from Zoom land? You're muted.
I'm sorry, no, yeah, I have absolutely nothing to add, and for once, I therefore will not add something yet to saying, I have nothing to add.
Okay, great. Sounds good, then can I have a motion for approval? Second? Discussion? You wanna go, should we, should go ahead and read it?
There there aren't any conditions in the draft uh resolution, it just has an effective date of July fourth and upon filing of the bylaw, so.
Great, okay, so um voted that the Madison planning motion, the Huntington zoning commission approve application twenty four dash twenty three. Twelve and eighteen Beethman Place map ninety one, lot seventeen, eighteen and sixty eight dash one zone R U two. Owners applicant Susan B. and DeWitt Zeus the third and Stephen Perry, lot line revisions to modify common property line between lot seventeen and lot eighteen. In addition to this conveyance, conveyance, lot seventeen will be combined with lot sixty eight dash one. Effective date of this approval shall be July fourth, twenty twenty four, upon filing, signed by our on record, on favor? Hey.
Okay, uh one quick question, um for the Mylar, I do a signature block?
For just the chair?
For just the chair?
Yes.
For just one?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Small.
A small. Very good, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, good to get this taken care of. All right, approval of minutes?
Sure.
June sixth, twenty twenty four, from the zoning commission meeting, our members present Downs, Reinhardt, Connor, Dusa, Bubba and Morgan. Motion to a fee. Second. Any corrections, edits? I did not see any, there was one resident uh identified as Kim. But I don't think we know.
Called her last name.
But other than that, I didn't see anything else. I'll vote to approve. Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great.
All right, remarks, um nothing from me? Erin, do you have anything else to add?
No, uh landing shoes, just to communicate, uh I'll be, you know, going uh sending emails. So that we can post agendas for upcoming July meetings, our dates are a little off, and and we're looking to schedule a special meeting as well for the trimming, so. I'll try to get venue locations and things, um but your next regularly scheduled meeting is the plan of conservation and development public hearing. Which will be held at the senior center uh at seven o'clock on Thursday, June eleven.
Great, that will notice. Senior Center is on Bradley Road behind the congregational church?
Oh, yes.
It's air conditioned?
First floor or or?
Yeah, what's that?
It's on the first floor.
Oh, yeah. Their cafe is the room.
And it's air conditioned.
Yes, it's a night, in fact, it's a nightly venue.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
All right, and in that case, any further comments, your discussion, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, ma'am.
For a second?
A second.
Discussion, in favor, we are adjourned at. Thank you.
Still a bit light out on this longest day of.